Quite some infrastructure challenges, capacity constraints throughout the city. The system is aging. We have been, we've done quite a few studies on the sedimentation of the Marina Lagoon itself, inadequate staffing, and of course, the severe storms we experienced this year highlighted the need for dedicated funding. So what happened earlier this year, New Year's Eve was a significant event, which was followed by many atmospheric rivers. On that day, to give you some context, on the top of that figure is San Francisco, the large circle on the bottom is San Mateo. So the storm we did experience on New Year's Eve hit San Francisco and San Mateo extremely, extremely hard. Within two hours, we registered the 125-year event, followed by a second storm that registered 115, and then 12 hours, the 300-year event. Since then, we've completed quite a few technical analyses, specifically on the Marina Lagoon, and we are, we've have engaged with the Marina Lagoon residents and have quite a few meetings planned with the community. So the storm highlighted, right, even more so reinforced the need for dedicated funding. So we have been conducting outreach for quite a few years now, and we will be gearing up to do a much more focused outreach effort in the next few months based on your feedback. We are planning a few community meetings. We have updated our website. We will be using our toolkit that involves newsletters and social channels, printed mailers, as well as the community meetings themselves. So we have been working on this effort for quite a few years. We began with a presentation to the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission back in December of 2020, and we are now here in 2023, seeking your input on the implementation, the next steps, as it relates to the fee study, the outreach, and the approval process. So I will pass this on to Chris now to discuss the funding analysis.
Thank you again, Azalea. My name's Chris Coulter with SCI Consulting, and SCI has been on board with the San Mateo Stormwater Project for, I believe, it's been, it's been about three and a half years now. And in our initial phase of work, we studied the funding analysis and funding options for the city, and what we ended up finding in this initial report was essentially a full $86 million fund needed for capital improvements, additionally, about $3.9 million for operations and maintenance, and as part of the lagoon work, costs were identified at a maximum level of $2 million annually, in addition to a full lifecycle approach that would end up with, when we amortize everything over a 30-year model, you'd end up with about a $9 million annual cost. So that's a full, full program funding need of about $9 million annually. This work involved evaluation of all the potential funding sources that could create a revenue stream annually for, for the city's stormwater operations in the full stormwater capital program. This report also identified some preliminary rate structures. As part of this full contract work, we also engaged the city with community polling work, and that's what we'll be able to talk to in more detail in these coming slides here. The community polling work was done in two, two separate surveys, so what we're doing now is following up on the initial community polling with a tracker survey and the results for that. We also have under this service contract work for public outreach, which is ongoing, and finally, a stormwater fee implementation, which would be a fee report for, for a potential Prop 218 balloting, includes a rate study. Okay. So just to sort of encapsulate everything, we've got a full program requirement, an annual requirement of $9 million. That equates to about $226 per year when we look at the individualized properties in the city if we're talking about a single-family home, the average single-family home. And that, when you look at that per month, comes out to about $18.87. Now, in the survey tracker that we've proceeded with, again, this, this occurred last month, actually, in April, so the surveys were mailed on March 31st, and we had 5,000 surveys that went out. And this is essentially to track our results based on the previous survey, which was done at the end of 2021. So some time had passed, and we received direction from the city and city council to get some updated feedback from, from the property owners in San Mateo. 5,000 surveys again were mailed on March 31st as a stormwater and clean creeks and flood protection initiative. The survey tested some messaging, and as well as testing two different rates and the property owner's willingness to invest in the stormwater system. We did also continue to test some of the community priorities in terms of what types of projects and what types of features might make someone more, more prone to vote yes for this type of a ballot measure. We'll go over some of that in more detail. And again, some, some of the projects and issues, we wanted to sort of pinpoint what was, what was more important to people and what was less important. So the survey findings, we tested two rates. The first rate was eight, the lower rate was $8 per month. The higher rate was to support the full service, the full service level cost for a full enterprise, which would be $18.87 a month. Again, this is for a single-family home. So the low rate, $8, surveyed at just about 53, exactly at 53.0%. And the higher rate was just about 45.7% support, and that would be combined for definitely yes and probably yes. The survey had a pretty low margin of error, and that's because we had a very high return rate. We had, I think it was about 22.5 or 23% return rate, which was quite a bit higher return rate than the previous survey. So that, so we did have a lot of engagement from folks in the community. And again, the, the results that we saw indicate support to go forward with the lower rate of $8. The screen you have in front of you now is, it's a summary of the community issues and priorities, questions that were asked. So when folks received their mailed survey, there was a, a bottom portion that asked for respondents, in terms of the issues that are presented, would they be more likely or less likely to support this measure based on the question that they have in front of them? So the number one priority of the community was to protect flooding, rehab the infrastructure, and that tested quite high, just about at 60%. Other issues that were also supported, things like removing trash and pollution, the, the question based on capital projects received also very high support to, to invest in, in projects that would protect the city from flooding, as well as improve water quality. And, and again, we also received some strong support for strong infrastructure related to some of the impacts of climate change, which is associated with more frequent big storms, like the ones we saw on New Year's Eve. And at the bottom of the list, the, this, the issues that received less support were projects relating to Marina Lagoon, as well as the lagoon dredging. And, and what we, when we look at both surveys, you can go ahead. What we can see when we, when we look at both surveys together is some, some very strong price sensitivity in the results. Although the surveys were mailed about 16 months apart, the, the highest rate, their 1887, what was, what was mailed at just a month ago, has the lowest support rate at 45.7. And the survey 16 months prior to that was about $3 less per month. You can just kind of draw a line from the highest support, which was the $8 rate, all the way down to that 1887 rate. So first of all, this indicates that the data is strong, it's good data, and there's no real outliers or anomalies. This all makes sense. But we can really point to is that there is a serious concern for fiscal responsibility from the property owners, and they, that there is price sensitivity. So again, just to reiterate, we see that there is, there is support for a stormwater fee in the city for $8 a month. So that comes out $96 per year. That's just a little bit less than half of what is needed for a full service, full funding. And again, to reiterate, flood protection resonated strongly with the community. Environmental factors, trash and pollution also tested highly. That was the same for both surveys. For the survey that was conducted in 2021, and the surveys that were conducted in 2023, we had very similar profiles for supports and, and projects and issues. And again, with Marina Lagoon, the, the support was similar across both surveys. So what does this all really mean concerning the financial realities? So you have a full funding need for 9 million. This proposed fee at the recommended rate, which would be $8 a year, $8 a month, 96 per year, brings in just about $4 million annually for the first year. So it's just a little bit less than half. The strategy that is up for consideration would be to maintain the existing funding, which is $3.2 million for the O and M, and use this additional revenue stream of $4 million per year to cover the additional O and M costs that has been identified, as well as Marina Lagoon dredging and the stormwater capital improvement program projects. So in other words, we're proposing that new revenue would be used strictly for new projects and levels of service. And this slide that you have in front of you will help demonstrate this. So we're showing essentially here three scenarios, and that's because the lagoon dredging is somewhat of an unknown at this time. And this is based on the 2018 Marina Lagoon dredging report that the city had done, which identified that there was two sets of costs based on the type of soils that are at the bottom of the lagoon. And essentially, those costs create a pretty wide range, you know, if you, if, if those soils at the bottom of the lagoon have a lower level of contaminants, it's possible for all that soil to be hauled at a nearby landfill, which is about 15 miles away. That set of, that set of variables would result in a best-case scenario where annual cost would be just 1 million. And in, in the case where those soils contaminants were at a high enough level, you would see those soils would need to be hauled more to a distant location, resulting in about double the cost, which would be $2 million annually. So essentially, the graph that you see shows what that means. If you've got to spend more money on that dredging because there's more soil contaminants, we get to do less work on essentially the CIP program. While, while a best case scenario really lets you get into, deeply into the CIP, you can do a lot of the high priority projects and the middle priority projects So this study session, what we wanted to do was give you the chance for, for us to receive your feedback. The timeline that you have in front of you is what we've been, what we've been continuing on with here, which is proceed with an $8 a month stormwater fee. And the fee structure and funding strategy would come to the council in July with a fee report, and a potential balloting then would happen in the fall, which would be scheduled for October 16th. And this would all result in the results finally being announced in January 2024.
That concludes our slides, and so we seek direction on the findings, the fee strategy and timeline.
Thank you very much, Chris, and thank you, Director Mitch. This is obviously a critical issue for everyone in our community, so thank you for the work. So I'll turn to my council members to see who has questions.
Thank you, Azalea and Chris. So assuming this ballot measure were successful, do, it sounds from the, I get the sense from the presentation that we may not yet know exactly when we would get to conduct a dredging operation. But could you maybe speak a little more to, like, by when we could, you know, when, what the next steps might look like if it were successful related to that?
Absolutely. If this, if we proceed with this ballot initiative, we would be able to establish the fee and begin collecting next fiscal year. This would go on the property tax rolls. We would need at least, so depending on the set aside, based on, you know, the flexibility of the fee as it relates to either a million or 2 million of set aside, we would need at least five years to have enough money for a, a small sort of kickstart project. We would have to identify the areas. The big unknown, as Chris said, is, is the contamination. The disposal costs are, will vary and are extremely high if, if the, the sediments are found to have high levels of toxicity. So, but we would need at least five years to accumulate enough funding for a, a project.
Thank you. But of course, if this were not to pass, or if we were not to go ahead with this, then, you know, when, is it fair to say that we would have an indefinite timeline for dredging?
Absolutely. It would depend on the city's finances and what, if there is money to appropriate, additional funding to appropriate for this effort.
Thank you. No further questions at this time.
Thank you. Questions down here?
Excuse me for the long term in turning the microphone on, but my arms are too short for the distance. So I've got some, some questions about the whole process, and then later on, I'll have some suggestions. But if we were to desegregate the, the data, what percentage of each district do you think we're returning the survey? And the reason I'm asking that is, from District Four, I'm getting information from the neighborhood associations that very few people received the survey there. That kind of makes sense because of the, I think, didn't we do this, I'm going to ask two questions in one, didn't we send these out based on the likelihood of likely voters?
The survey was stratified as a random sampling, and it was stratified in a way that identified likely voters, as well as other types of voters.
So just, just to be clear with why I'm getting at this, I've walked a lot of precincts in 50 years, and we always walk the highest voter turnout, and they're not in the flood area. So I'm curious as to, if we know the returns from what, what areas of the city?
We, we do have means to, to figure out exactly where all the votes came from. I, I think that the votes were already analyzed in terms of their proximity to the lagoon, but not currently by council districts.
Okay, that's fine. So that tells me how the random sampling was done too. So that was my next question. Thank you. It seems to me that 45.7 also has a margin of error just by way of instructing why I'm going here. When we did the FEMA 218, the polling was much worse than this, and we passed it by 80%. So it really depends on your ground Because I know the, the two districts that are most impacted, it's about 40% of the So are, are we looking at doing some grant writing because of the money mail available by the Biden administration for, for infrastructure, especially when environmental issues are at hand?
We have been exploring overall grant funding as it relates to transportation. We have not come across a specific program for this, but we will continue to explore grant funding opportunities.
Yeah, I think that's important because found money is better than tax money. So I think that's what I have right now. I may have some later, but thank you for the answers.
Thank you, Councilmember Newsom.
Thank you for your presentation. It was very in-depth. Two, two additional questions. One, well, three, actually, if I, one is just more of a comment, tagging on to what Rich said. Are we able to get sort of a heat map as to, you know, where in the city the results came from? Is that something we can get?
Yeah, we, we can definitely provide that. I will say that the, because of the small number of particularly folks who may enjoy frontage on the lagoon, that naturally, the margin of error grows with, and the smaller each slice gets. But it's also possible to create a, more of like a visual map of, of how things were.
It will help us just gauge what we're, how much outreach we're going to have to do to get this to pass. Second question, we came up with the, the number of $8, but I noticed in one of the slides that there was a range. So is $8 just the average, or is $8 going to be what every property receives?
So that's a great question. And so the $8 is for the average for a single-family home. It's considered like the median's in terms of the characteristics that this type of fee would look at. It's the typical symbol, single-family home in terms of the parcel size and other characteristics. So, so there could be other single-family homes that would receive a slightly lower rate or a slightly higher rate, but $8 would be the typical.
Okay, thank you. So just to expand upon that, if you had a fourplex or an apartment building, there would still be a share of that levied on the apartment or the condo complex. It just would be potentially smaller per unit?
Correct. So, yeah, yeah. And those are analyzed in terms of, you know, how, you know, how many units there may be on each floor, and so on and so forth. But that's all factored into, to that type of property, and each, each parcel is analyzed in terms of the, the exact type of property and the size and other factors.
Okay, thank you. And the last thing was, I noticed that top tier says flood protection. Bottom tier was the dredging of the Marina Lagoon. I'm assuming that I think maybe we could do a better job of communicating that they're one and the same, correct? If I'm not, maybe I'm overstating it, but the dredging of the lagoon would actually be able to provide us with additional flood protection. Is that accurate?
Well, it is yes and no. The Marina Lagoon is a flood protection facility, right? It stores flow. The storage are the upper levels. So right now, the storage is not compromised, but indeed, a sedimentation continues to become more of a problem. We can compromise the storage. So I think the, the answer is eventually it could become an issue as it relates to flood protection. Currently, it is not.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Great. Okay.
So just to parry on that, it seems to me with the flooding we had in the hills, the backup of some of the creeks, and the immense amount of water that went into the lagoon, that it was compromised in December 31st and the first few days of January.
We, so there was, we did do an update, our hydraulic model for the city. The Marina Lagoon does not impact areas past 101. So in terms of the hydraulic effect, because it's so flat on the other side of 101, that if the lagoon backs up, it really, it affects the areas east of 101 to the lagoon, but not upstream.
We had flooding up in the hills, actually. Part of that was culvert, not being large enough. But also Laurel Creek was over the brim.
Absolutely. So what we, you know, one of the challenges with the 2004 Storm Drain Master Plan is that it does show a lot of constraints upstream that are not related to the storage in the lagoon, culverts that are undersized, pipes, and it definitely, everything depends on the size of the storm. So indeed, the storm on New Year's Eve was significantly strong and intense, and so the areas upstream saw flows that had not seen, been seen in a long, long time. But there are, are constraints citywide.
So I assume that not just the lagoon, but all of the other storm work we want to do all go together in order to make the city safe from flooding?
Exactly. So the fee that we had been, everything that went into this proposed fee, the $18 a month, includes the dredging of the lagoon, includes all the improvements that were proposed as part of the 2004 Storm part of the 2004 Storm Drain Master Plan, which looked at all the constraints throughout. That was citywide, so it does include all the capital improvement needs citywide.
I think the piece that's left out of this, if people are drawn into a FEMA flood map, the cost per month will far exceed what we're planning to make our infrastructure safe.
Thank you very much. I had a number of questions like that, so we can, we can go by that. I guess I'm, I'm interested in what the actual survey looked like, because if you say, tick a box, which one of these things do you think is important versus presenting a kind, any kind of a scenario, or showing that incredibly effective heat map that we were shown a couple of meetings ago, that showed where on the city storm damage occurred, and the fact it really occurred everywhere, trying to create some kind of understanding of the impact and not just theoretically, here's what you get for this amount of money, here's what you get for that. So I'm interested in the actual survey.
Those are good considerations, yes. And so luckily, when these surveys are mailed out, we include an informational piece of paper that, in this case, was front and back and included photos, which actually included photos of the flooding that occurred. And so this, this informational item, it's sort of in narrative form and also goes through, you know, the needs, the whys, the situation of, you know, the city's current funding, and what this potential fee would then provide in an annual source, what would it mean to the residents and to the city's infrastructure? Because it is important that when someone, when someone receives this type of survey, that they're informed as to the bigger picture and the context around it, and so that's why the survey does come with an informational piece. And just to kind of give you a bigger picture, you know, this is also important in a potential balloting, because a property owner also receives, you know, their ballot by mail, and that, and that ballot includes a little bit of information as well. So we try to mimic the, the actual situation where a property owner receives this in the mail as a ballot, as an official ballot. They receive some documentation with that official ballot. So the survey is, is intended to really mimic that, that situation. And it is, it is critical also, when you look at outreach, you know, that's one of the, the biggest components of the outreach, is that folks don't really understand the stormwater system, not necessarily, and a lot of it is underground, but, so it's really an informational challenge.
Great. Could I get a copy of the actual survey? That would be really helpful. Thank you. And I don't know whether any of my other council members would like one. And then secondly, do we have any understanding, I think Councilmember Hedges made some allusion to it, how in the past, the ballot measures that we've had that were fee-based, I mean, there are lots of other ballot measures, but fee-based ballot measures, how the preliminary survey did versus how the actual vote return did? Because obviously, there's a lot of effort that would go into it, but do we have that kind of information?
Yeah, we, so in terms of the stormwater efforts that, that SCI has worked with, there's been several that have engaged in survey work with, you know, a comparative ballot measure than that followed. So, you know, I, not, I don't have that off the top of my head, but I think a couple of them have, have a survey that preceded the actual balloting. We can, we can give that, we can get that information to the city.
If I may add, because we've asked that question of SCI, what has worked in other, other communities in terms of getting the support needed for a stormwater fee? And I think that's why the, the survey as it related to challenges and seeking feedback from residents is very, very important, because there are themes that are more important than others, and it really does, it is, it is specific to one's community. In this case, we do have a large lagoon. In other places, you know, big storage basins do not exist. So while we have asked SCI for that kind of information, it really, at the end of the day, comes down to what's important to the residents of one's community.
Yeah, that makes total sense. I think it's great that we asked about what other communities do, because they might have a great idea that we can learn from. But certainly what I saw in the, anyhow, we can talk about that later. My last question is just basic, what percentage approval would this ballot measure have to get in order to pass?
So in order to pass, you'd need 50%, just plus one vote?
Plus one, okay. Thank you. Those are all my questions. Any other questions? Okay. Comments later. Yep. Okay, so then let, if there are no other questions, let me open it up for public comment.
Thank you very much. I have two speaker slips right now. If you're on the Zoom call and would like to speak to this item, please raise your hand now. If you have a speaker slip, you haven't delivered it to me, if you could bring it forward now, that would be great. And the first speaker is going to be Jerry Brazel.
It's Jerry Brazel, okay. But I want to thank you all for your hard work in this serious project, and I'm the first to admit that I'm not up to date in everything. I just found out a lot about it at the coffee shop when I was reading something about it. But what I did notice was, it said somewhere that the most common user fee is like water, sewage, and garbage services. And what comes down to, like I say, $96 a year for the single-family home. And I read that, and I was thinking, well, it looks like Brad Pitt on the screen there. Oh, no, that's me. Okay, that, that's an old joke. But anyway, in all this, I didn't see any reference to water conservation. And that sort of puzzled me, because in Hayward Park, a neighbor of mine, Sharon, she has a downspout water diverter that takes the water coming down the downspout into a big barrel and also to a cistern. So Sharon doesn't contribute one drop of water to any of this problem as far as Sharon would sort of think, and I would agree with her. But there are people and situations that contribute more water to the problem, and I feel that they should pay more. It makes sense to me, maybe, and I'm thinking about paved parking lots, they contribute an enormous amount to the problem. Okay, and I have in mind the Barnes and Noble parking lot down here, and you all can visualize it, I think you know where it is. Okay, now, I would suggest that big parking lots, and you can work it out legally, big parking lots like that should pay at least 50 cents a month or a year, however you want to figure it and work it out, 50 cents a month or a year to this as part of the fees, and that it not rests just on the single-family homeowners and people like that. Now, why something like that? I would suggest that fee, which could be mitigated by water conversation, conservation, including pervious, whatever you call it, pavement or something like that, pervious pavement, ponds, or cisterns. Now, I'm from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania originally, and going back years ago, this problem came up there, Gertie's Run, there's a creek, and is my time up? I'm, I'm looking, oh, it's always getting close. I see three minutes here, and it's down to nine there. Anyway, it's worked out that in other places, they found out that all this water runoff was coming from parking lots. So make the parking lot people do something about it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
What photo you have there, Ms. Gray?
Our next speaker is Mariva Godfrey, followed by Michael Reagan.
Hi, good evening. We're all in this together. So I'm a resident of 23 years of District Four, right on the lagoon. You know me well. I support the recommendation of moving forward with the stormwater utility fee, but at the $18.87 monthly fee. This report does not state what percent of residents surveyed represented each of the five districts, and what percentage from each district returned the ballots. The current levels of understanding, in my opinion, and others, are related to where residents live and how affected they were this winter. The survey was deployed without any real outreach, I mean, real public outreach to the entire community, and a flyer is not sufficient. Breadcrumbs the amount needed to make the improvements in such a critical flood control infrastructure is a recipe for delaying taking effective action. Costs will continue to increase, the capacity of our stormwater retention basin will continue to decrease, and flooding will become a winter occurrence. A robust citywide outreach collaboration between residents and DPW can get the stormwater fee measure passed. So it reminds me of this quote, "Whether you think you can't, or you think you can, you're right." So let's think we can, and the truly informed residents of San Mateo will vote in favor of an $18.87 fee monthly to keep San Mateo safe from flooding. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Michael Reagan.
Yeah, just my input would be, I live on 31st Avenue, so I'm not in the flood area, but I have been looking into the situation and doing a lot of research. It seems like, from what I figured, 42 years, this item has been kicked down the road, and right now it sits in your hands, and unfortunately, you're here, and you guys can probably realize, I remember being here the first meeting when you guys, your first time sitting up there, and this was handed to you. And so where we're at, where we're at now is that I've been in a business that has done water damage for over 40 years, and it, it is one of the worst tragedies for a family. It sometimes takes years to get out of it with all the damage that's done. So it really affects people, their livelihood and their everyday life. The bigger picture of the city itself, we need to, as a city, protect our residents. You know, we're looking right now into 8,000 new homes that we have to build, but the priority should be the people that live here now, and it's your unfortunate responsibility to look after the people that are here now. And I think there's, this is something we can't neglect for any more years. I believe it's, you've really got to sell this thing to the public, and I, I think that as a city, you should sell it as a city, we're all responsible to maintain our city. And I'm, like I say, not in it, in that flood area that was affected. I know what they went through, but I know that I would feel more comfortable if this was done. You could also have a fee for new construction, which the 8,000 new homes would provide, all the commercial buildings that are going in, that type of ways of getting money and such like that. So I do believe that, you know, we can, we can probably get this on the ballot, and I do believe this latest storm, I think, raised a lot of people's kind of concern about the problem. I don't think we can avoid it any longer, but that's just my take on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have no more in-chambers commenters. I'm going to, we have one hand raised in the Zoom environment, phone number 326. Please go ahead and unmute yourself. Phone number ending in 326. There you go.
Hello, good evening. This is Drew. So first time on the phone, so I apologize for technical difficulties. I question, two questions related to the fee, and I apologize also, my phone and internet was breaking up during the questions around this a little bit, and I missed part of the presentation. So the, let's say it's $8 per property or per parcel, so a single-family home, $8 times 12 for the year. What about apartment buildings and, like condo building, where there's 45 condos on one property that's subdivided, but each condo is paying property tax for each property, you know, pays school tax and stuff? So is it $8 per each one of those condos times 12 per year? Or is it $8 divided by 45, and so each condo is barely paying, not even a dollar per month? So I was wondering about that. Thank you, thank you much. Other thoughts, I'll wait a whole different time. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no other speakers.
Thank you very much. Then I will close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion.
Actually, through the chair, since we had a couple comments about whether non-residential properties would pay and whether the payment has to do with permeable area, I wondered if we could ask staff to clarify. Please.
Sure, those are great questions, and so, yeah, everything is related to the land use on the parcel, so we use the single-family home as, as sort of the baseline, because it's the most, by far, the most common type of property in the city. But yes, in the most recent example that was brought up by, I think his name is Drew, that type of apartment building would be charged significantly more. Now, if it was just an apartment parcel, that's just based on, you know, how big that particular parcel is and its impervious area. I don't have that rate on top of my head, but in the other example that he had given, if those were all still individual condo units, separate ownership, each one of those would be around $6, I believe, or so, per month. So it is, it would be a lot more if you just multiplied that by, I think the example was 45 units, so that would bring in substantially more than just the $96 per year.
Thank you, Chris. And to Mr. Brazel's point, if, if there were a commercial property that had a large parking lot, would, would that owner pay more than $8 a month?
Yeah, thanks, Adam. That's another really important observation by the commenter was, that type of property does create a lot of runoff, and certainly that is absolutely a big part of the calculation for a commercial property, and that, that parking lot does contribute a lot of runoff as well as it does impact the fee in an upwards way, so that, that commercial property in that example would pay a lot more than just a single-family home.
Thank you. I'll just try to make some brief comments to continue since the mic is on. Overall, I would like us to go ahead and proceed with an $8 figure at this time, based on the survey results, and continue public outreach that focuses on the types of messaging that appear to score better, protecting flooding and rehab, infrastructure, environmental concerns, and trash cleanup and so on. I am, you know, I, I do think it's important that we go ahead and try for a stormwater fee of some significance rather than nothing at all, an all-or-nothing proposal. I appreciate Ms. Godfrey's comment, but I do think that it's, it's most important that we make progress on this front. And so if, if the, the work we've done to this point suggests that $8 has the best chance of passing, while others may not pass, especially due to the margin for error, then I think it would be useful to go ahead with $8 at this time, and it wouldn't necessarily preclude us from considering a future increase. So I, I'm excited at the prospect of beginning some of the work of a number of stormwater projects that have been on our Storm Drain Master Plan for nearly 20 years now. We have a number of folks in the room and on Zoom who were part of the heat map that a number of council members brought up, and, and the last storms, you know, really showed how vulnerable we can be. And I expect us to be finding ourselves in that situation again, and so it's important that we do what we can to improve our infrastructure, to protect ourselves as best we can. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Other council members? Other council members?
When we had the FEMA assessments, which we still have every year for 20 years, my condominium and townhouse development had some of the lower rates. It was $52 a month, which is some of the lowest rates in the city that were in the 218 district. And I just try to remind everybody that that's much more expensive than fixing the problem. And so we really need to think in advance of what may happen, and still may happen with the flooding we had with FEMA. So I think that the larger fee is the way to go. My experience has been, because I've been involved in passing measures for years, that if you have a good ground game and you have actually volunteers, we had almost 50 volunteers walking several weekends on the FEMA 218, that you can move the needle substantially, especially if you have people like myself who had their cell phone listed on the mailers that went out, so people could actually call and discuss it. So I'm more in favor of moving the needle, and for some very simple reasons. Next year, it will cost more than this year. And the longer we delay collecting the money and having to go back to the voters and maybe getting more money, the costs are going to escalate. So it just makes more sense to me to try to get the money now that we need to do the work. And I'm not sure that we can wait, as long as we're going to have to wait for another large storm to impact our city, before we fix not only the culverts and the storm sewers, but also the lagoon. I'll leave it at that for now.
Thank you, Councilmember Newsom.
Well, I support moving forward with this measure. I hear the $8, but I also, you know, concur with what Councilmember Hedges is saying. I would be comfortable moving that number up. I think the costs are only going to continue to go up with time. And, you know, we're looking at five years to start, based on an eight-year, or $8 per month fee. I don't know that we have five years to start this project. So, you know, I think fees can always be adjusted, maybe, and I know it'll be a harder, a harder measure to pass at the $18 level, but I concur that I think we should be starting high and coming back, if, coming back and lowering if we, if we find ourselves able to raise the funds sooner. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Could you do me a favor and put up the slide you had that showed the percentage approval of the four fee rates? Thank you very much. You got it? Great. So that was why I asked how, what the percentage would have to be to pass. It looks like, right now, obviously, things can change, but there'd be a pretty high certainty that the $8 fee, it would have a strong chance of passing, based on the survey results. And the 1887 would have, you know, 7%, 8% less chance, it'd be less than 50. So I look at that, and then I look at what's happened in the past with ballot initiatives. And I agree that a good ground game goes a long way. But to me, it's that in conjunction with what is the messaging and what are the stories you're telling? And you can't do that necessarily in the kind of survey that you would be mailing out. It really does come down to neighborhood associations, door knocking, all that, but to say, here's what the situation could be, here's what it was, forget about the future. I mean, you were working 24/7, Azalea, you, I mean, you could tell that story better than anybody. So I would love to have us, but I understand the challenge of trying to go for 1887. I mean, that, that really would be a major stretch. But I would like to look at maybe a $14 in the middle. I don't know what kind of analysis you've got or could do, based on the data points that you have already, in extrapolating it. But to me, that would be an aggressive goal, but one that with good ground game, good messaging, and I'd look to everybody who's ever said, we need to support 1887, to say, I'm going to stand up and be an ambassador and go knock on doors of my neighborhood. Thank you, Mariba, and everyone else, and you too, Michael. But I think we really, because the way we're going to sell this, and I'm not speaking to the choir, because Councilmember Hedges and Mayor Amherst Lee and lots of people have done it already, is by going out and talking to their friends. And I think you all did a great job in doing the survey and giving us lots of information. Would love to understand the segmentation by neighborhood, but I think that I, I'm uncomfortable going all the way, but I think if we could get to 14, it looked like, from your chart, we could do enough in the first five years that we could really come back and demonstrate to the population, here's the money we, you entrusted us, here's what we've done, and here's the impact it has on your lives. And then maybe go back for an increase, because probably the cost will be more. So I guess I would look at my councilmen, fellow councilmembers, and see what your reaction to that would be.
I'd be open to a $14 compromise number.
14 is better than 8. But I still think we can pass 18. I'm always positive.
I appreciate the enthusiasm. I guess when I look at this chart, though, I see one number that, that, you know, breaks the threshold that we would need to pass. So I, I think, you know, I can understand that there'd be, you know, that we might be able to move the needle with a bit more effort, an all-hands-on-deck thing. To me, I get the sense that what we see here is, is, you know, comes with the implication that we have a strong ground game and an outreach program. So I'm worried about opting for a rate that did not score high enough to give us the confidence. I think if we, you know, if we did that for other ballot measures, I guess I just, I'm not sure of the last time we went in that direction and found success. So unless, you know, it would, I would be good, it would be good to learn of whether that is something that has happened. I guess I just, I, I, I'm still on 8 for those reasons.
I think that's a great point, Councilmember Lorraine. And I'm wondering if we can come up with the, because in my mind, you look at every past three or four fee measures that we put out, we did surveys for, if not all of them, most of them. And what was the survey result versus what was the ballot measure result? Now, that isn't a straight-line comparison, but it would give us another point to understand whether, you know, what the potential for upvote would be based on doing the sale.
I think maybe if I can ask Jerry to, to give his opinion here in terms of SEI's experience. I will note that this, we do not have a stormwater fee, right? So this, this would be a new fee altogether versus increasing sales tax, you know, or so it's a, it is a different proposal. As it relates to what you can see here with the differences between 2023 and 2021, we had, I think, 11 atmospheric rivers. And, and so it was, it was surprising to us to see these results. So I don't, but I don't know, Jerry Bradshaw, if you can, if you can give your opinion in terms of just overall different types of ballot measures and how this would, what kind of success rate we might see with a different fee?
Yeah, I can chime in. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Um, SEI has done many, many ballot measures. We haven't done too many storm measures, because frankly, not many cities have tried these. But we've had six ballot measures just in the past couple of years for stormwater alone. But we can also look to other mail ballot procedures, other Prop 218, like, like the assessments that Councilmember Hodges was mentioning. And we have seen the ground game move the needle a few times. It's, it's a tough chore, and it kind of depends on the community, the size of the community. I'm not sure if the assessment he's talking about was just in a couple of neighborhoods. That's a little easier to move. But a whole community of, what, there's 30,000 properties in town, that's, that's a big ask, to try and move the needle on that many people who could vote. I do understand your curiosity about the by-district results. We don't normally, routinely pull that out, we can, but the ballot measure sinks to swims not by district, but by the community as a whole. So that's something to keep in mind and should go through. We have seen good success stories where agencies have chosen to go at the higher rate that has a lower survey and have it succeed, but we've also seen it go the other way. So it really depends on a lot of things. I don't know, Brazilia, if that answers what you're asking.
So the FEMA flood map covered about 8,000 homes. We did a lot of outreach. We had a pretty good committee. Eventually had a pretty good committee when I finally convinced people we could do it. And it was a pretty intense campaign, but we moved the needle all the way up to 80%. But that was convincing people, little different scenario. We could tell them, you're paying $2,000 a year now, you'll pay $115 a year tomorrow. So it was a different, a little different metric in selling it, where we could actually show people how much they would save. In this case, we would be telling them, your homes will be safer. We're more likely to keep you out of FEMA with, and by the way, the costs of FEMA insurance have quadrupled. It's really high now. So that's a major thing for this community, and it may ace people that are on the margins out of the community. So we really do need, in many ways, there's so many variables on this, to protect people here in the city and get this work done. And I hate to have my granddaughter still waiting, when she's living in the house, on getting this work done. So let's try to get it done.
So through the mayor, can I jump in? So I'd first like to ask if either Chris or Jerry could comment on the, the 1887 versus the 14 compromise, and whether they think there would be any, any swing in difference there? Because I think we talked about that during the study session a few months ago, and it was determined it didn't necessarily make sense to, to, to compromise. So they may, I'd like to get their thoughts on that, and then I have one other comment, if I could.
And if I could add on to Drew's question, you're, the 49.9% on the $10 level, I mean, that's raising it 0.2 as opposed to several points. So what experience have you had in pushing a survey into reality a little bit, not a lot?
Well, yeah, so my recollection, really, my response to the, to this sort of question is, when we were originally in front of the, in front of this body, I think in March, some of the discussions centered around the rates that would be surveyed. And what we had essentially proposed was that there is a price sensitivity level for folks around $100. And this is why the rate for $8 was sort of targeted. And essentially, the results confirmed that there, there is a price sensitivity from the property owners, but also that that $100 is an important landmark for, for a property owner when they're, when they're deciding whether this is an investment they want to make. It is a substantial figure for a lot of people. So that was, that was one of the things we wanted to look at, and that's why we went down from, from the $10 a month rate, because we needed to know, you know, what was the real price sensitivity. And while we knew it didn't, it wouldn't cover even half of the program needs, it was still important to be able to, to really drill down and find out what would, what would really be a solid number that we would expect to see support levels that would indicate a ballot measure could be successful. And I'll let Jerry chime in on, on what you're asking about theoretical support for a $14 rate, if Jerry has any thoughts.
Yeah. If you could jump to Slide 17, that kind of gives a big picture of the revenue versus all of the work. Yes, that one there. You can see the $4 million range starts at the top of the brown part of the bars. And in order to make this work as well as that appears to work, we're keeping the existing 3.2 million of funding in place. And that comes from various city sources, such as the general fund. If you were to increase from $8 up to 14, you could certainly move up the blue bars and get there to all of the low and medium priority projects. And also probably lower that brown line down a little bit and start giving some relief to existing funding. But that's where the story starts to get tricky, because you've got, you know, the city could step up and say, we've been funding this, we'll keep funding it, or you could pay more, and we can, we're off the hook for a little bit of money each year that we could spend on other city services. And that gets to be a tougher sell, that this is a, sort of a leap measure for other funding sources, like the general fund. So that, that message gets a little tricky. The way it's structured here is new money for new services. Without the money, you don't get the services or the projects. But when you start saying, okay, well, if we can go up to $18, then the story's the same as it would be at $10 or $12, you're still going to get the same amount of delivery. The benefits show up elsewhere in the city's budget. So that's where the message gets a little tricky. So I just want to point that out. I have not run calculations to see what it would take to get up to the top of the blue bars without dropping down into the brown, if that makes sense. Hopefully, you follow my, my graphic description remotely here.
That addresses your question, Joe.
I mean, what I'm, what I'm trying to ascertain is, so $8 a month polled at 53. So even that is not great. That does not, should not give anyone a huge level of comfort, because the plus-minus on that gets you close to the 50% on the minus side. So I would say that whatever council decides to do tonight, assuming they decide to do either the 8 or the 1887, staff is going to do everything they can on the ground game aspect of it, because we're not comfortable with even 53%. So I don't know from, from what staff would put into this, that there's going to be any difference, but we're not going to work any harder or less hard at 8 versus 1887. 8, to Councilmember Larian's point, like, that, that at least gives you, you know, going in, based on a statistically valid survey, that you've, you've got majority support for this. So the 1887 presents some risk, obviously, because it didn't. It didn't garner that support, even with the plus of the margin of error. I understand the need, but, but, but we run the risk of, of nothing. And that's a decision that, that, you know, council need to make. My concern is, if, if, if you, if you go to 14, we haven't done, we haven't done anything on that. So we have no idea what that is. But given, I guess my point would be, I feel like you'd be better off just going to 1887 than trying to split the difference with something we haven't looked at, at all, just based on the, the spread of these numbers. But that, that But that was kind of what I was looking to ascertain as to whether SEI had a feel for, do we think we'd get any sort of bump from dropping it to 14 in some sort of compromise? Or are we better off to just either do eight or 1887? Because those are the two, at least, we have some numbers on.
Yeah, and I think the other one I would add to that is the $10, since there is information on the $10. And that, but then Chris brings up the point of, it's a, do you call it $9.99 a month? Or is it $120 a year?
Jerry, you can speak to that price sensitivity and what the chances? Sorry, Jerry, if you can speak to the price sensitivity that Chris was explaining, but also if we would see, you know, really a difference here between that and 1887.
I have some good comfort that a $14 level would be kind of close to the $16 range, maybe half a percent higher. Again, the margin, it's a bit guesswork, but I do see a very strong trend here. So I would be somewhat comfortable there. I think it's worth noting to the city manager's point that staff is going to work with the outreach consultant and its own efforts just as hard, no matter which rate we start at. And keep in mind that city staff is somewhat limited on how much it can campaign in the nature of it, because it cannot advocate for a measure such as this. So it kind of comes down to outside forces which are beyond the control of the city. So that's just one extra factor. But I have a comfort level that the $14 would fit on this curve, more or less.
I appreciate those comments. I guess I feel like my comfort level is anxious about even $8. You know, to me, it seems as though, from what we've been discussing, that getting $8 done may require the ground game that Councilmember Hedges was talking about, given the margin for error. So I think that, and I think, I wonder if I could ask staff about, you know, if we were to not succeed, where, you know, where that would leave us, how much time do you think it would take for us to consider this again?
So absolutely, if we were not to succeed come October, then we would have to reassess, take lessons learned, and it would probably mean starting over and maybe going back to the residence a year later. I think we have to assess, too, maybe Jerry, you can give us your opinion, but there is, you know, we have to take into account other factors going on, and if there is an element of sort of fatigue or other challenges with the economy. So it is difficult to sort of figure out if we would be in a better position. So it just, it depends. But I would say that in terms of us reassessing and figuring out if you all would want us to go back with another survey and initiate that process again, it would at least be a year.
Yeah, I would add to that, since you have a lot of flexibility in when you schedule one of these ballot proceedings, we recommend that you stay away from the big general election periods because your message here will get lost in a mailbox full of all kinds of other messages. So I think the council runs in even years, which is when most things are on the ballot. And you might want to stay away from that. Statutorily, I think you're barred for one year. So asking the question again, I'd have to confirm that, but I seem to remember that. In practicality, you'd probably be a two-year wait just to let the dust settle, just to get past the big general elections that come around every couple of years. So I would say, in practical terms, you're at least two years out before you do it again. And it's a big question, do you survey again? Do you go to the expense of that? The balloting itself has an expense with the printing and mailing, obviously. The financial analysis work we've done is fairly recyclable for a year or two. So there's costs involved with that. But as far as time, I would say practically speaking, a two-year delay.
Do either one of you want to talk?
I'm not really sure who the appropriate person to ask this question is, so I'm going to direct it towards Drew, and he can, maybe it's Prasanna. But if we do come to an agreement tonight on the $8 rate, what, at what point do we have to go back before the voters to increase rates? So, meaning, we do $8, we have torrential rains and storms, do we have an amount that we, as a council, can decide to raise rates without going before the voters? Or any rate increase will have to go before the voters?
Yeah, if I can jump in there, the rate structure, which we're underway, we're well into our rate study and our rate recommendations that would come through, but the structure is set up usually to track with typically the Consumer Price Index. Because stormwater rates don't have a five-year life on them like water and sewer rates, where you are forced to reset them or revisit them every five years. Stormwater rates don't have that restriction, so you end up setting rates for a long period of time. And in order to do that and cover some hedge your inflationary impacts, usually tie it to an index, usually the Consumer Price Index, you would be bound to that. That would be your maximum rate if it's the Consumer Price Index or some sort of cap on that each year. That's what you could do without going back to the electorate. If you'd want to increase it more than that, you'd have to go back through a Prop 218 ballot system again.
Go ahead, Prasanna.
Okay, thank you. No, I think under Prop 218, we can adopt a schedule of fees providing for automatic adjustments, but only for water, wastewater, sewer, or refuse collection. So as far as whether stormwater actually qualifies under one of those under Prop 218, I think we'd actually need to take a closer look at that. So it wouldn't guarantee that you could build a CPI into that process. It might require going back to the voters, but, you know, happy to check into that.
That would be great if you could. Councilmember Hedges.
I'm still fixed on the $18 rate, but I'm seeing I'm not getting any gravity from that. So I would settle on the $14 rate if we can get an agreement on it tonight.
And I think even though I was the one that proposed the $14, I am becoming convinced by staff's recommendations and our consultants that $8 is going to be a great success, and I'd love to be able to really develop something where we can measure what we do with the hopes of being able to go back to the voters as soon as possible to get more. But I think I am now feeling comfortable with the $8, given the feedback I've heard.
You know, I think you've all heard it, I'd obviously like to do more, but if we're in agreement that it's $8, I'm on board with $8.
I would just like to add that I share the deputy mayor's comments, and I think that if we were to come back to the voters later, if we were to succeed with eight and then have some tangible measurement of improvements, I think it might be easier to go back to the voters and ask for more. But it wouldn't be $18 this time. It might be eight to 10 because we've already asked for eight. So with that, I appreciate the interest in eight, and those are my comments.
Okay, so I think we've got three supporting eight and all of us wishing we could support 18.
So we have direction, we have direction, and we will be back with the Prop 218 process.
Okay, and if Prasanna could look into, whether you can put the CPI in with it, that would be great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Jerry, and thank you to everyone involved. So...